Did you see that when I opened it up? I wanted to take the screen off of it. But, oh my god.
That's incredible, Mary Lou.
Off the counter.
I could see that. Hi Kelly, I wanted to...
That's for Tom.
Um, I don't have, we don't have Melissa today, so, but I do have Madeline Lopez. So where the script, where's my script?
So instead of Melissa, um, doing the, starting up the pledge, are we gonna pledge today then?
Right, so add a little more wrinkle, so Rucha is gonna help you to do the pledge.
Okay.
And then everywhere else, so I will help you to do the roll call and Madeline is gonna help you to do the raise hand.
Okay.
But, you know what, I can help you out.
Rucha is the pledge and, um...
And I do roll call, any of the roll call, roll call vote, roll call attendance, and then Madeline does the, um, what, how does it say? Letting people speak. Okay.
Hi everyone.
Hello.
Hey Mary Lou.
Hey Rick. So those of you who are enjoying sunny Lower San Bruno, I'm at the top of the hill and that's fog behind me.
I can see that.
Look at you outside.
Darcy, I just wanted to say hi.
Hi Darcy.
I'm here in case all the other computers go down and everyone has to run into my office like last time, remember?
Yeah.
So, we're, we are at City Hall and hopefully no one's laptop or computer freezes, but we found we need redundant, as, I think the IT term Tom can confirm is redundancy, so if something goes down, I'm here to help.
Okay.
Turn it down a little bit.
Hi. I am going to step away from the keyboard for two minutes and come right back, but I figured I would just check in. I, I have it, I'll be right back.
Let's see, everybody's hair is not too much longer than it was last time.
I squeezed in a cut on Monday before they got shut down again.
Oh, that's right, cuz you're in Santa Clara, right?
I'm in Santa Clara, but then now they're allowed to do outdoor, um, haircutting.
See, that's great, I, I like that, that's pretty cool.
I know, I know, I went in and lady's like, "How much you wanna cut, cut it all, cut it all, I waited this long, cut it all."
I know, I was like, "Take two or three because I don't know if you're gonna get shut down again, just..." Chop it off.
I get mine cut tomorrow.
Somehow I'm not having any problems in that area.
That's amazing.
Always talk about it.
Nice to get on early and have a little chat.
Yeah. It's like old times.
Yeah. Pull the chairs into a circle and chat.
Yeah.
I'm finding, um, um, a challenge with lighting, you know, I've got the lights on in front of me, I've got, I know that it's not, I have lighting behind you, but I've got lots of light, it still has a dark... Rick, we could see you really well, I could see the, the ladies in the office really well, and Tom, but, um, I'm noticing my, hopefully you could hear me good.
There, I'll give you some.
My laptop, not my, not my... Light behind you makes your face darker.
I know. This one I'll have to do.
You can see you really well, Kelly.
Oh, good, okay, I just see Rick so clearly with that nice outdoor light. If it goes late though, Rick, what are we gonna do?
There's lights.
Okay.
One of those gazebo tent sort of things and there's a light in the center that's on a timer, when it gets dark, it turns itself on for a couple hours.
Oh fancy.
Yeah. One of the simple luxuries in life, you know? Although most of the time I spend inside the house looking out.
That's true. It looks like you're camping with your redwood there.
Yeah. It's nice out here, it's, it's a very pleasant backyard.
Yes. It looks fun, get it.
I miss my San Bruno school.
What's that, Rick?
I miss my San Bruno schools backyard, it was beautiful backyard.
Yeah.
Though if the fog wasn't there, you'd see the mountain.
That would be nice.
From down here, it's very romantic to look up at the fog. I don't know so much about being in it, that's kinda fun.
You have to bring the kids up here. Sweetie Ridge is right behind, I could look down onto Sweetie Ridge and watch all of the hikers.
They're beautiful, well, whenever I hike, I look up and I look for your house.
Yeah.
We're, we're live? We're live? Okay, Madam Chair, we're live, um... Do you, we're still missing Commissioner Morgan, but we can go on without him for now.
Okay. Uh, let's see, yes, it is seven o'clock, and if we're live, we'll go ahead and, and start, and, uh, hopefully he'll pop in. So, um, good evening and welcome to the San Bruno Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, July 21st, 2020. Thank you for attending our third virtual meeting. Uh, tonight, again, we have some extra members of city staff here to help make this possible, so thank you. Um, members of the public, uh, we do wanna hear from you. If you are in our audience and if you would like to address the commission during public comment or public hearing, uh, for any agenda item, uh, go ahead and use the raise your hand button, uh, when the time is, when the time is here. And, uh, when it's your turn to speak, uh, Madeline Lopez, I believe, will be calling your name. She'll unmute you and then, uh, you'll have three minutes to address the commission. And if you're joining by telephone, it's similar, uh, you can address the commission, uh, by pressing star nine and the city clerk will, uh, address you and, I'm sorry, that's gonna be Madeline again, Madeline will address you and unmute you. And you'll be given also three minutes. Um, and then, let's see here, oh, and then, uh, everyone is welcome to speak once per agenda, per agenda item. And then, also for my commissioners, uh, again, just for clarity during our remote meeting, we're gonna continue to do roll call votes, uh, for the agenda, agenda items tonight, or item. And we'll use, uh, a voice vote to close the public hearings, so just be prepared to motion and second, and then we'll just voice vote to, um, to close those. Uh, and with that, I think we're ready for the roll call. Um, Pamela, are you able to facilitate that?
Yes, of course, roll call, Chair Lethen?
Here.
Vice Chair Biassadi?
Here.
Committee Member Hamilton?
Here.
Sorry, Commission, Commissioner Hamel, uh, Hamilton, sorry, Commissioner Harmon?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan? He's absent for the moment and hopefully he will join us momentarily. You have five members and you have a quorum, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you Pamela. Uh, then we'll go ahead and we will do the pledge of allegiance. And Rucha, if you're able to put the flag on the screen, I'll go ahead and lead us. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Um, well, with that, we'll go ahead to our business items. Uh, first is the approval of the minutes from June 16th, 2020.
Madam Chair, uh, uh, Madam Chair, there is another correction I would like to, uh, point out on page three of the minutes. Under the first motion made by Commissioner Harmon, second by Commissioner Hamilton, for item 4B, 250 Cortlande daycare, um, Commissioner Morgan was actually recused from the item. So, it, the vote should read five to zero to one with Commissioner Morgan abstaining from the vote.
Okay, and that has been changed, uh, in the...
It will be changed.
It will be, okay. Okay, thank you. Does anybody have a motion or any, um, adjustment?
I would, I would move to accept the minutes as amended.
Okay. Second, okay, and then, uh, Pamela, are we doing voice vote on this one?
I think we have to take a roll call vote, so I'll take a roll call vote.
Okay.
Chair Lethen?
Aye.
Vice Chair Biassadi?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. And then, item two is public comment. Uh, this is an opportunity for members of the public to speak about topics that are not on the agenda. Um, Madeline, are there any members of the public who would like to speak?
Hi Chair Lethen, there is no members of the public that would like to speak.
Okay.
Well, I would like to, um, I would like to, uh, add that there is one member of the public who has his hand raised. Uh, name is Paul Wepinski, so I'm going to let him talk.
Okay, welcome Paul.
Paul, just give me a minute, uh, and I can let you talk.
Okay.
Paul, can you hear us?
Yep.
Okay. Just give me, give Madeline a second to start the countdown for three minutes, uh, and then once you see that up on the screen, uh, you can start your comment.
Okay, yeah, thanks for letting me speak, I, I just have one question, is there a, uh, a one-stop shopping place that has all the schedules of the events and meetings for the Mills Park proposed project?
Uh, that's a very good question, I don't know, but city staff, um, hopefully should be able to help us with that. Um, do you want, did you have any, uh, specific comment, or was it just the question that you wanted to ask?
I'm just following it, it, but it seems like the, the city council, uh, had an issue or an agenda item on it, but I thought there were supposed to be one place where you can get all the different meetings so that, uh, you can follow what's going on with the project.
Right, I, I remember something similar, a specific website or a web link available through the city website. Um, yeah, so let's, uh, we'll go ahead and follow up with city staff on that and we will let you know, and if, uh, we'll go ahead and, uh, and see if staff is able to answer that question. Um, anything else, Paul, before we move to staff?
No, I've got something for your agenda item, but that's it for this part.
Okay, all right, so we'll go ahead and, uh, see if staff can answer that question now, and then, uh, we'll invite you back during the agenda, uh, public hearing.
Yes, Madam Chair, um, Mr. Wepinski, um, so the Mills Project status has been updated to the website, that's the city website, and also council approved the project, um, um, let me see, on the 28th, just this past Tuesday, I'm sorry, looking at the wrong, no, 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 the 14th, last Tuesday.
Okay, so if, if Paul or any other member of the public would like to, um, access, uh, maybe you could tell us a little bit about what's on that website and how, what to click on to get there?
Yeah, I'm just looking.
I mean, I, I have what I think is the site you're looking for up on my own screen right now.
Madam Chair, I can take it offline with, uh, the member public and we can further assist them.
Okay, and I think also it would be really great for the rest of us and the rest of the public, um, to learn about that, so maybe you can come back at a later point and let us all know?
Sure, Paul, can you send me an email with your contact and then maybe we can connect?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, who do I send it to?
You can send it to me, um, you should be able to find my email either on the agenda or on the website.
Okay, I, I hate to be ignorant, but what's your name?
Uh, my name is Pamela Wu, um, or you can drop down my email address, it's P W U at SanBruno.ca.gov.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thanks Paul, and then thank you Pamela for getting back on that. Okay. Um, Madeline, do we have anybody else who wanted to speak during public comment?
There are no other hands up on the screen.
Okay, all right, well, anybody who does have public comment, um, there'll be an opportunity at the end of the meeting, uh, to chime in. So we'll go ahead and move from public comment, uh, to announcements of conflict of interest, I don't believe we have any tonight, but does anybody have a conflict of interest and need to recuse themselves for the agenda item? No, okay, all right, then we'll go ahead and move into the public hearing items. Um, it looks like our only item tonight is for 164 Elm, and, um, I guess we're ready for the staff report, please.
Good evening Chair and members of the planning commission, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you, uh, my name is Rucha Dundee and I am the Associate Planner with the, uh, Community and Economic Development Department here at the city of San Bruno. And to, tonight I will be providing your staff report for the project at 164 Elm, Elm Avenue. And the request for tonight is a use permit to allow construction for a new house that exceeds the permissible floor area standards and to allow a new construction on an infill lot. The project also includes a request for an architectural review permit for, uh, for construction resulting in floor area that is greater than 3,000 square feet. If approved, this would be a 3,090 square feet house, including a 441 square, uh, square feet two-car garage. The agenda for tonight's presentation is, uh, the objective of the meeting tonight, the recommendation, uh, a quick background on the project and the project analysis for why this project needs a use permit, and followed by questions from, uh, the planning commission and the members of the public. The objective tonight is to approve the use permit, uh, for, uh, under the following code sections as, as indicated in the staff report. Uh, the second is also to approve the architectural review permit, and then also to accept the categorical exemption, uh, pursuant to, uh, the SEQA. Staff recommends, uh, that the planning commission approve this use permit and the architectural review permit based on findings one through six and conditions of approval one through 28, those are indicated and, um, uh, summarized, uh, in the staff report. A quick background on the project, the project is located, uh, on Elm Avenue, uh, between San Felipe Avenue and, uh, Santa Lucia Avenue. And it is located in the San Bruno Park Four subdivision. Uh, the subject lot measures 5,000 square feet, and it is developed with a single-family, uh, uh, single-family house which is in dilapidated condition. Uh, it has a one-car garage. The, uh, house, the existing house measures, uh, 1522 square feet, and this house was built in 1908. Uh, to give you a background on the architectural review permit pursuant to the city, uh, to the municipal code, all structures requiring a use permit also require an architectural review permit uh, for the San Bruno Municipal Code, and therefore this project was reviewed by the Architectural Review Committee on February 13th, uh, 2020. Uh, the discussion on this project focused, uh, around, uh, privacy concerns or overall, uh, the proposed height of the project and the overall, uh, floor area of the project. Uh, staff received six public comments during the meeting, four of the members expressed, uh, concerns regarding privacy, uh, basically because of the, uh, new second story. And two members of the public were supportive of this project. The commis, uh, the commis, the ARC members were, uh, Commissioner Morgan and Commissioner Hamilton. And the ARC forwarded this, uh, architectural review permit with a vote of two zero, um, for approval to the planning commission, uh, provided the following recommendations were incorporated. The first recommendation was to eliminate a second floor, um, balcony. Uh, the second, uh, recommendation was to provide more landscaping, uh, in the rear yard to have more screening, uh, to the neighbors in the rear. Uh, the third was to reduce the overall height of the building by three feet. And, uh, the fourth recommendation was to provide photo simulations from, uh, two properties, two, um, immediate properties to the rear, uh, as you can see, uh, in the image here. The applicant has met all these recommendations from the ARC and has submitted the project, um, in February, uh, following the ARC meeting. The images that you are seeing in, on the screen are the photo simulations that were, uh, submitted by the project architect. Here you can see, uh, the view from 167 Popular Avenue, that is, uh, an immediate, uh, neighbor to the rear. And then on the right side, you can see, uh, the proposed house, how it would look from the, uh, property in the rear. Again, uh, you, you can see a photo simulation from, uh, 161 Popular Avenue with the tree added and without the tree. And some more of the photo simulations that were provided by the architect. On April 15th, uh, staff led, um, voluntary neighborhood meeting, uh, in order to listen to the neighborhood concerns, uh, for this particular property. And because of the current situation, this, um, meeting was held, uh, completely virtual over Zoom. And, uh, the revised application from, uh, February 2020 that incorporated the ARC recommendations was shared with the, uh, with the members who were in attendance of this virtual, uh, voluntary neighborhood meeting. Uh, five neighbors were in attendance. Uh, the neighbors, uh, overall expressed their contentment because of, uh, the recommendations that were incorporated. For example, elimination of the rear, uh, rear balcony on the second floor, then addition of more landscaping elements, and then also reduction of the total height by three feet. However, they, they still showed, uh, they still expressed their concerns because of, um, uh, the privacy concerns posed because of the new second story and also, uh, because of the overall, um, floor area of the, uh, proposed project. Uh, one of the comments from, uh, the public was to, uh, have additional screening, um, and more trees to be planted in the backyard of the neighbors. However, staff explained that this would be a voluntary agreement between the developer and the neighbors. That was the summary of this, uh, voluntary neighborhood meeting. Uh, after the revised project from, uh, the ARC recommendation, the proposed plan is, uh, in front of you tonight, the applicant proposes to have a two-story, the applicant, uh, proposes to replace, uh, the existing one-story, single-family residence with a two-story house. If approved, as I previously mentioned, the project would have 2,694 square feet of living area with, uh, 441 square feet detached two-car garage, as you can see on the image. The, the garage will be accessed with a new, uh, 12, 12-feet-wide driveway, um, uh, towards the, uh, garage in the rear. The proposed first floor will incorporate a new front porch, a family room and a dining area, uh, with an adjoining rear deck. The new second story would consist of four bedrooms, two full bathrooms, and there will be, uh, there will not be any second story deck. The project requires a use permit, uh, for two reasons, one, because it exceeds the permissible floor area standards, and two, because it includes a new construction on an infill lot. Both the, both the use permits, uh, analyze, uh, how this project, uh, is in, isn't, is compatible with the neighborhood, given the floor area and the design of the building. Staff analyzed this project and also looked at other, uh, other, other properties in the neighborhood and found that the properties in the neighborhood range between 1,500 to 2,500 square feet excluding the garage. And staff finds that this project is in, is compat, is compatible with the area of, uh, the other single-family, um, homes in the neighborhood. Most of the houses on this block are two-story and, uh, range between similar floor area. Uh, the second use permit, uh, use permit was for the, uh, construction of, on an infill lot. And this use permit analyzes if the property design, uh, if the proposed design is in, is compatible with the neighborhood. Um, staff finds that it is compatible because, uh, the project provides for step backs and provides massing and, uh, reduces the bulk, uh, of the building, uh, with the help of architectural features such as step backs, uh, cladding, and then also, uh, there are changes in the facades. So therefore staff finds that the, uh, that the proposed project is in, uh, is, is in, um, is compatible with the neighborhood and the residential design guidelines, and therefore, uh, therefore, uh, staff supports this use per, uh, use permit. The project also requires an architectural review permit uh, because, uh, as I stated earlier, it, it is a new construction, uh, that is greater than 3,000 square feet. I would like to elaborate further on the, uh, elevations and why it meets, why it is in, um, uh, why it's still, why is, uh, the project, uh, compatible with the neighborhood? So on the, the front, uh, on the front elevation, the front porch adds depth, uh, depth to the elevation as seen from Elm Avenue. The proposed first and second story construction, uh, comply with the basic design principles outlined in the guidelines as it reinforces the neighborhood, uh, neighborhood development patterns while respecting the scale and bulk of, uh, the property and the neighborhood. The north elevation is, uh, broken up with three wall planes, uh, where the middle section steps, uh, steps out approximately three feet. On the north side, uh, the windows overlook the neighbor, neighbors' roof. Uh, various architectural features including step backs are included to enhance the elevation articulation and minimize privacy concerns. On the south elevation, although there is a bed, bedroom window facing the neighbor, neighboring property, it is five feet setback from the property line and, um, and approximately 10 feet away from the, uh, neighboring property. Uh, this window is required to meet the Egress requirements. And, um, the other proposed windows on the south side are higher, smaller, and do not align with the neighbor's window. In the rear, the second floor, uh, is, uh, stepped, uh, is set back at least 70 foot from the neighbor's property in the rear. And the rear balcony is also eliminated with this revised design. Therefore, staff believes that the proposed design will not pose any privacy concerns with the neighboring property. The applicant has also proposed to provide a de, a more detailed and, um, uh, elaborate landscaping plan with this revised, uh, design, the applicant is also proposing to add two new trees that are, uh, bronze low court tree, uh, at the, in the rear yard, uh, at the property line. The proposed project, uh, has a total of 1,024 square feet of landscape area, including, um, grass lawn, lawn, low line bushes, etc. Uh. This, uh, the staff, uh, therefore staff is recommending that planning commission approve use permit nineteen oh two six. And architectural review permit twenty zero zero five. Based on findings one through six and conditions of approval one through twenty-eight indicated in the staff report. Staff is also recommending to accept the environmental determination for this project. This concludes my staff presentation and I am happy to answer any questions. We also have uh, the project architect, uh, Kevin, Ken Ibarra and the project owner Kevin Parkin with us tonight. Um, I suppose they also have uh, some um, presentation to make, uh, so. We, we might want to um, include them into the room uh, to speak.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. A very helpful report, I appreciate that. Mary Lou, did you wanna say something?
Just a clarification question. Um, I thought I heard you, Rucha, say that there were only two full bathrooms. And I see three, I just wanna make sure that I understood it correctly.
Yeah, I said two full bathrooms on the second floor.
Okay, I guess I didn't hear the second floor.
Okay.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other commission clarifications or questions?
I had, uh, I mean, I guess kind of a minor question. The um, the proposed front elevation west. Uh, let's see, it's in our packet, it's page twenty-eight. Um, it appears to have a structure which. I'm unclear whether it's a view through to a different building, that's, that's like off to the right of it, I mean, the um.
Yeah, that is the neighboring property.
Okay, alright, so that is off the, okay, alright. I was a little confused because at first I was like, is this that detached garage? But, okay.
Yeah, the detached garage is one story, so, yeah.
Yeah, I was just puzzled by the illustration, okay.
So I'm gonna let the owner uh, and the applicant uh, come in. Uh, just so that you know, I have two Kevins uh, in the attendee, so the owner Kevin Parkin, if you could. Raise your hand so that I can let you talk.
Okay. While you're doing that, I'm just gonna go ahead and say that we're officially opening the public hearing. Um, and then we can invite him to, to give his presentation.
Madam Chair, if I can just add to the record that I see that Commissioner Morgan has joined us.
Oh, good.
Actually, I've been here all the time, but I was only invited in some time ago.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Mister Ibarra and Mister Parkin, you both can talk now.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ken.
Good evening, Chair Lethan and uh, planning commissioners. Uh, I first wanna thank uh, the planning staff, uh, Rucha and Pamela. Uh, we were supposed to do this about four months ago and then that thing called the pandemic hit. And uh, so here we are and uh, remembering, hoping, hopefully remembering all of this. And I just wanna say that uh, I am the project architect and applicant represented, representing Mister Kevin Parkin, the owner. Uh, we have both reviewed the staff report and are satisfied with the recommendation and the conditions of approval. Uh, I just wanna briefly state that the design of the structure uh, with the owner was in keeping with uh, with an older neighborhood. And so we didn't feel that the uh, a, a home, a large home with a, an attached garage would be appropriate. And so we uh, designed a two-car, uh, a two-story house with a large porch. Uh, and uh, a driveway to uh, provide more setback and then have at the uh, at the bottom of the property, the rear of the property, the two-car garage. So it, uh, in effect, it does uh, you know, represent a lot of the uh, older designs uh, of, of the time. Um, what else do I wanna say? Uh, we designed it uh, uh, as close to as we could, uh, in keeping with the uh, design guidelines. Uh, we have various materials, we have uh, various plane changes. Uh, it's, it's a uh, we feel it's an attractive design uh, with a simple, uh, with a, with a simple structure with just the two roofs. Uh, we did uh, listen to the concerns of uh, of the neighbors and uh. Uh, had no problem addressing those concerns. Uh, and in fact, uh, do wanna mention that uh, met with uh, two property, two residents on Poplar Avenue directly behind. Directly east of, of, of the project and met with them the next day on eight, uh, February fourteenth. Uh, to see what they're seeing and also take photos from, from their vantage point. Uh, to provide as accurate as possible those uh, those photo simulations. So measurements were taken, uh, photos were taken and so uh, uh, we, we believe that the, the photo simulations are as accurate as can be. Um, not going any, but I'd just like to say that the uh, I wanna clarify. Uh, and I don't know why it's not more uh, prevalent as far as the materials, but the materials. Uh, are going to be uh, lap siding and shingle siding and trim. Uh, and it will be, uh, the, the proposal will be with a uh, a fiber cement material. Uh, preferably uh, James Hardy Company, Hardy, also known as Hardy Plank or Hardy Shingles. So that's, that's the materials that the exterior wall materials that we'll be using. Other than that, uh, again, thank you and uh, hope to get moving uh, on this project again. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Ken. Um, Kevin, did you have anything that you would like to share with the commission and the public?
Uh, not much, I'm just looking forward to moving forward with the project. The building that's there is very tired, it's useless. And uh, you know, I'd like to get it cleaned up and, and get moving on it, so. I, I thank the staff and thank everybody for, you know, helping out and getting us a great design and supporting the project. And uh, just thank you very much and hopefully we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin, I appreciate it. Um, let's see, um, I guess uh, I'll, I'll invite my fellow commissioners. Uh, to share any questions that they may have for the applicant or the owner.
Um, through the chair, um, the only uh, comment I have on it, I like the design and that everything looks great. Uh, the one concern I have is that there's a large expanse of concrete now at the side, the drive-in at the side. It's over a thousand square feet of concrete. And a large ex, uh, expanse of plain concrete looks very dull and boring. And I'm just wondering how that will be treated, will it be stamped or marked or colored or what? The drive, the new drive-in. There's a question for uh, Ken Ibarra and the, the owner Kevin Parkin.
I can, uh, I'm Kevin, I can, I can answer that. Most likely what I'd like to see on it is probably got left, left off. I'd either go with the stamped concrete, but I also like the um, the pavers that let the water uh, imperviate into the ground. So we'll probably go with something like that.
Great, that would be terrific.
Terrific.
Thank you.
What I might also suggest is that we probably have a uh, maybe not the entire length, but uh, some strategically placed. Uh, landscaping along that fence line, uh, to break it up and also catch some of that drainage.
Yes, abso- absolutely, yeah. I would definitely, next to the house and next to the fence, I would definitely put a planting strip in there, absolutely.
Thank you very much, that would look terrific.
Thank you.
Okay, um, does the commission have any other questions for the applicant? No? Okay. Well, uh, in that case, um, we'll go ahead and check in with Madeline because this is the time. Where members of the public are invited um, to comment on the item. And uh, have we got anybody, Madeline, who'd like to share?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Uh, we have Nancy Foreman, I'm going to allow you to talk, give me a moment to bring up the three-minute timer.
While you're working on that, um, hopefully, before, before you start that clock real quick, I just wanted to let you know that everybody gets three minutes, as you see. And we're gonna take all public comments at one time and then we'll bring it back to the commission to discuss them.
Thank you, I'll start the clock now.
Thanks.
Hi, everyone, this is Nancy Foreman and my husband Gus Pollak. Due to COVID, this is the first opportunity we've had to address the entire planning commission. On February twenty-third, we and our immediate neighbors attended the architectural review meeting. Planning commissioners who attended can attest to the fact that the meeting was very contentious. Which made it hard to think and complete all our questions and concerns. We wanna thank you for removing the second-story balcony and moving the second-story bedroom windows to the corner. Twice since the architectural review meeting, we've written to Rucha and asked for consideration for two other items. And we're told to deal directly with the client. This seemed odd to us since we received no direction ahead of time how the process works. We assumed the planning commission and the city planners to be the chain of command. In the same manner, each Mills Park homeowner did not contact the developer directly. We asked if the client could please consider a hip roof in the back to match the houses on either side and give the illusion of a setback. For the record, one sixty-four Elm, if approved, will be the only house that will be two-story expansion on the east side of Elm. All the other houses that expanded did not add a second story. Because of the lower elevation on Poplar, the house will appear to be three stories and much taller than those on either side of it, to the left and right. And further down the east side of the block. We wanna know what is the builder going to do to protect our privacy and safety during his building time? We are currently hearing reports firsthand of backyard invasions. All the neighbors on the west side of the street would have invited each of you to our homes for a visual visit. But because of COVID, we knew it was not safe for you to be inside our homes. We are sad to lose our privacy and do not look forward to the increased noise levels in our quiet and peaceful neighborhood. Our hope is that going forward, you find a way to work better with neighbors, especially those who have been the backbone of the Bruno community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Nancy and uh, thank you Gus. We'll go ahead and um, invite anybody else from the public that would like to speak.
I have Paul Wapinski, I'm going to allow you to talk, give me a moment to set the timer. Are you there, Paul?
Yeah, here, I was just waiting for you to totally start. Okay, first off, I wanna make it clear that I, I don't live down there, I live in Mills Park. But I think San Bruno's losing its character by approving these, these huge houses. Most of the houses in the, in the areas around where I live and, and down there are within the uh, you know, fifteen hundred square feet-ish. Area, this is gonna be two to two and a half times most of, of what most of the houses' sizes are. And um, we're going up, people that, you know, thank God, people don't have a two-story house where I live. Across the street, they approved this uh, uh, addition and um. You can see it from, from El Camino, just sticks out like a sore thumb and it can look right into your neighbor's yard. You know, I, I feel sorry for the people who live uh, near or around that house. The second thing is down the, on those streets down there, parking is terrible. I, I don't see that, uh, you know, uh, that that's gonna help any by having such a big house. And I'm, I don't know how many people are gonna live in there, but um, I just think that uh, we're losing the character of San Bruno by. By uh, having these single-family houses become these huge, um, you know, two-story. Uh, you know, three thousand square foot houses, I just, I just think we should put a limit on them and make them. You know, the character of the neighborhood and so that we don't have these huge monstrosities. That's just my opinion. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate your contribution, um. Madeline, um, yes, Madeline, do we have uh, any more comments?
I do not see any more hands up, Chair.
Okay. Well, if we have no more hands up, um, then we can close the public hearing. And then bring it back to the commission to discuss any questions, clarifications and address um, the concerns that were shared. Um, we uh, can entertain a motion to close public hearing?
I'll make a motion that we close public hearing.
Commissioner Harmon, did you have a concern?
I was gonna, I was going to ask staff if they have an estimate of how many off-street parking spaces are available here? If, you know, I mean, we, we know there is a two-car garage, I was eyeballing the driveway and, and thinking.
Okay, Commissioner Harmon, if you could pause for just a second, we'll come right back. But um, let's, let's go ahead and take the motion to close public hearing and close that and then we'll get into our questions.
I'll motion that we close public hearing.
Okay. Okay, very good. And then I think we can do this by a voice vote. Um, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Um, so we can go ahead and move into questions, comments and responses. Uh, Commissioner Harmon?
Yeah, I mean, as I, I'm just looking at it, it, it looked like, you know, you would have the two-car garage itself, potentially two spaces directly in front of the garage. If you maneuvered a reasonable-sized car, kind of off to the right and then potentially two more in the driveway. So I mean, it, it looks to me like there was six, at, at least six off-street parking spaces allocated here.
Yeah, so I can take that, uh, I can clarify that. So the driveway itself uh, is sixty-one feet long, around approximately that number. So uh, with the two-car garages, uh, that, with the two cars, I think um. At least four to five cars will be able to be parked on that, uh, in that driveway.
Okay. Commissioner Harmon, did you have any more questions about that or any other questions?
No, I mean, I think, I, I would hope that that would address people's concern in terms of, you know, is there. Going to be adequate parking provision for the people living in the household.
Yeah, because it, it sounds as though the covered parking requirements are met um, based on the, the requirements for the project. And then there's kind of a bonus additional, give or take three off-street parking spaces for the project, which is. Not super common with a lot of the projects that we see uh, coming through. So I think that's positive too. Yeah. Any other questions?
Through the chair?
Yes.
Um, I heard there was a comment from one of the speakers that indicated that this would be the only two-story house. And I was just looking through the photographs and it's possible that I'm, you know, but it appears uh, that there are other. I'm looking at page sixteen of nineteen and that one appears to have one, two, three from this angle, what I'm seeing. On Elm, and then from the backside of the Poplar, you could see. You could see that, the photographs, you can see the second story in some of the houses, so it's not, it's not really, um. It's not really, I'm just commenting on, on the thought that I heard that there wasn't any two stories. And it appears to me that there are, there are those.
Through the chair, I believe the speaker said that, I believe the speaker said that there, this was the only two-story addition. So I think that, I think there are other two-story homes that were original, that were built original two-story. I believe that's what, I believe that's what.
Fair enough.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Johnson, did you have any other questions or comments? Okay. Alright, any other points of discussion?
Um, just a comment from me through the chair. Um, no, just a comment from me through the chair. Um, you know, I think the, the proposal is getting rid of an ice-ore that exists there for many years. And, uh, they're putting a nice project in its place, which should be a boon to the neighborhood, and it should increase the value of the houses around it. So I think it's a, you know, very worthy project.
I know I've walked past the house a, a number of times and scratched my head and said, oh, that could be a good one. So, yeah. Uh, Commissioner Harmon?
I did want to just comment that, uh, uh, Mr. Ribara had, had remarked on the, the sort of older style of putting the garage behind the house rather than in front. And I, I wanted to just express some appreciation for that, that I think there's, there's sort of a cultural merit in orienting the house, so you have a front porch that people can sit on, that they can be engaged with neighbors walking by, um, rather than, uh, what you often see in a lot of newer, um, sort of cookie-cutter developments, where essentially the garage door is serving as the front door. People just drive in a garage that's practically adjacent to the street and then disappear into the house and never interact. Um, I think that's a really positive thing for the town to, to have one more house that's like that.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. I, yeah, I noticed that, too, and I, I feel like it has a, a warm and inviting character. Um, and I do feel like it reflects, uh, with a home, the, the home that's being demolished is so old. Uh, I was really surprised to see nineteen oh eight, it's really pretty impressive. Um, that I, I do feel like the, the architecture and the materials do give a nod to, um, to what is existing and, and, uh, a good part of what is existing. Um, I, uh, i-if no other commissioners have any comments or questions, I'll, I'll have a couple myself. No? Okay.
No.
Thank you. Um, uh, I know that, uh, it seems that most of, most of the public comment concern, uh, is in the, the size of the house, and they feel like the character, um, is, is challenged. And, um, one thing I wanted to ask staff was, um, I don't have it up on my screen right now. What is the FAR, the, um, floor area ratio? That's kind of a benchmark that we use, um, to, to gauge, uh, the size of the home. And may, um, I'm wondering if staff can maybe address that on, for this project?
Yes, I can, I can address that. So the benchmark is point six-two FAR, and the proposed project is within that standard.
Yeah. I know that point six-two is, um, just for anybody, this, this is my understanding of, of that number, is that when, uh, the crest, the crestmore explosion happened, and the, the families and the homeowners that were affected by that, uh, were rebuilding, uh, San Bruno had to kind of take a look at the, the size and character, uh, of the homes that were gonna go in, and the point six-two was really the benchmark that was set, that we just, um, kind of called our cap. Um, and so it sounds like this is within that, that FAR, and that's, um, uh, Rucha, if you could explain for folks who don't know what the floor area ratio is, I'm wondering if you can just describe what that means and why you would use it?
Sure, I, I can do that. So floor area ratio is basically, uh, the ratio between the, uh, the total size of the lot and, uh, uh, in proportion to the floor area of the house, which means, uh, any area that is, uh, on the first floor and the second floor, including the garage. So any area which is more than eight by tens, uh, ten feet and greater than seven feet in height would be considered as floor area. So usually, uh, uh, when, uh, applicants apply for, um, residential additions or floor area additions, uh, the total size of, uh, the floor area addition is limited by the floor area ratio, which is point five-five for a standard five thousand square feet flat lot. However, uh, because a certain, uh, because all houses are not same and all the, you know, use of every family is not the same, so people would, uh, people usually, some, some applicants would, um, like to go over the floor area ratio. That's when, uh, the use permit comes into process, and, uh, that's when an applicant has to apply for a use permit to exceed that permissible floor area. And that's where you are looking at, uh, this project tonight. So, um, today, the applicant is proposing for a point six-two floor area ratio, um, which means that sixty-two percent of, of the total floor area, um, of, uh, the lot would be, uh, the house. So I hope this answers your question.
It does. It, it does for me, and I, I just hope that it also addresses the concerns that, uh, the members of the public had expressed, um, with regards to the size of the home, is that, um, at that point six-two is, is our cutoff, and so it does conform to the floor area ratio. Um, and I know that the, the nature of housing in the Bay Area, multi-generational families, and, uh, really the, the landscape of, of home and family life has changed. And I know that many of our homes are smaller, but, um, we, we have these numbers and these thresholds in place to give ourselves some flexibility in accommodating a lot of different, uh, ways of living. Um, and I feel personally like, like this project, the massing, is, is well addressed, and the character of the home is in keeping with the neighborhood around it. Um, but I just wanted to, to share that, and thank you, Rucha, that's really helpful, uh, because I, that's one of the benchmarks that I use to, to really, um, look back to. Do any other commissioners have any questions? Um, I understand that another neighbor concern was the privacy, and, um, based on the photos that, um, Architect Kennebarra provided, um, that showed the, the original as it is, and then with the trees, I felt like, like the landscaping did a very nice job of, um, adding depth and breaking, um, the, the viewpoint from the neighbor's, uh, home. Uh, was there, I'm just curious if there was any, uh, Rucha, I know that you said that, um, one of the neighbors, and I, I think it was perhaps Nancy and Gus, had, um, requested that a tree be planted, not on the property that we're discussing, but on a different property. And, uh, and then it sounds to me as though, maybe you can explain better than I, but when we are talking about a specific project in a specific site, we cannot, did, we cannot require that there be work on a different site?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so the applicant, uh, the neighbors, uh, one of the neighbors, uh, had recommended to plant a tree in the backyard of, uh, another property so that they could, um, maintain it. So, uh, that is something the city cannot require. It would have to be a voluntary agreement between the, uh, developer slash owner with their neighbors.
Okay. That makes sense to me. Um, yeah, it seem, it seems to me like, um, with the architectural review process, um, the applicant did a very nice job of addressing, um, it sounds like all or nearly all of the concerns that were raised at that time. Um, and, uh, it sounds like the trees, the tree question is something that can be, or that must be addressed between the neighbors.
That is correct, yes.
Thank you. Are there any more, uh, questions or comments from the commission? No? Okay. Then, um, anybody, um, who would like to, we can go ahead and entertain a motion if you'd like.
I'd like to make a motion through the chair that, uh, we approve the permit, uh, use permit nineteen dash oh-two-six for a new house on one-six-four Elm Avenue.
Okay. And then it sounds like within this, we, do we have to, can we vote, uh, concurrently? Or do we need to vote separately for the architectural review permit and the acceptance of the SECO exemption?
You can vote concurrently.
Okay, so, um,
I'm sorry, yeah, but I didn't, uh, including the, um, uh, planning, the architectural review permit twenty dash zero-zero-five, and based on findings one to six, and conditions one to twenty-eight.
Okay. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. So, um, Pamela, if you could facilitate a roll call vote, that would be wonderful.
Chair Lethan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Biassari?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
You have to expect the motion carries.
Okay, thank you. So the, the project is approved, and there is a ten-day appeal period, um, and that is through the city clerk's office. And thank you so much for, for joining us tonight and, uh, going over this project. I think, um, it's gonna be, uh, nice to see the improvement. Okay. So, um, that is our last public hearing item. And we can go ahead and go on to item number five, which is items from staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, planning commissioners. Um, I just have a, an announcement or a request to ask for volunteers for the August thirteenth, twenty-twenty Architectural Review Committee, uh, members for a hearing. I see him, Commissioner Hamilton, Commissioner Johnson, and Commissioner Ham-Harmon. Thank you.
All right.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Pamela. Okay. In that case, um, we have the opportunity for second public comment. If there are any members of the public who want to speak up about an item that was not on the agenda tonight, this is your time to, uh, go into your Zoom and raise your hand or do what you need to do on your phone, and let us know if you'd like to speak. Um, Madeline, do we show anybody who would like to speak?
There is no one, there are no hands up.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so second public comment is closed. And, um, in that case, the next planning commission meeting will be held on August eighteenth, twenty-twenty, at seven PM. And it's still yet to be decided, uh, what the format of that meeting will be. So please check the city's website, uh, to see, uh, what details we have, whether it'll be in-person or Zoom. And, um, those will be posted as they're available. So the time is seven fifty-six PM, and we are now adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.